Good morning, everyone. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on as the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid, in-person, and virtual format. Some applications and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your time is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use Share Screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the applicant or agent may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the Chair they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application, if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate, and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebot only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Now, before we begin, I'd like to introduce our panel to you this morning. From my right to my left, we have Member Neil Palmer, Member Sophia Ruddock, Member Stan Kumarak, and I'm Don Taylor, panel chair. So our first item of business is confirmation of the last meeting. I will ask for a motion to adopt those minutes.
I'll so move.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Ruddock. All in favor? Okay, the minutes of the last meeting are confirmed. Are there any declarations of interest of panel or staff or items in this time slot? There are none. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have you received any requests for deferral?
We have. Could we deal with the one file to be closed first? Item number nine, sixty-four Silverstone Drive.
Okay. So we'll do that right now?
Yes.
Okay, item number nine is sixty-four Silverstone Drive. We, yes, we received from the applicant a request to withdraw this application, so I'll call for a motion to close this application.
Is there anyone here in the room for this application, sixty-four Silverstone Drive? Okay, we can proceed with it.
Okay, thank you.
I can also confirm that the agent on file is not present in the WebEx either.
Okay, thank you. So it is timely, then, to request a motion to close?
I'll make the motion to close the file.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Seconder?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Ruddock. All in favor? Okay, that item is closed. And now, Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, deferral items?
Yes, the first one is item four. It's at the request of Community Planning.
So item four is with respect to eighty-nine Van Duzen Boulevard. It is, purpose of the application is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage, and we do have remarks from the Community Planning Department that they recommend that we either defer or refuse the application, and I would invite the agent, Kathy Cadzella. Kathy, are you with us?
I am. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee.
Okay, I guess I would ask, are you in agreement with the Planning Department's recommendation to us that this application be deferred?
Correct. So we're currently collaborating with the Planning Department to further refine our application, so we kindly request the committee to consider deferral for the review, so that we can make the changes and then speak to them at a later date.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody in the room today that wishes to speak about item four? No one? Okay, then we can consider a motion to defer this application.
Motion to defer is requested by Planning. The applicant to consult with Planning.
Thank you, Ms. Ruddock. And a seconder? Mr. Palmer, thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Item four has been deferred. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you so much.
The next item with a deferral request from Planning is item six, ten sixty-one, the Queen's Way.
Yes, this application is to modify the building height and parking requirements of the site-specific bylaw seven forty-eight, two thousand and six, and as Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer pointed out, there has been a request to defer, both from the Planning Department and the applicant. Eldon Theodore, are you with us to speak to the deferral request?
Yes, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can, thank you. Can you just?
Yes, we are, sure, yes, we're supportive of the deferral. The unfortunate situation is that the staff member who has Carriage's application was going on vacation around the same time, and we need that staff member's input to ensure that they are supportive of the approach before it's approved. So we are happy to accept the deferral.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the room today that wishes to speak to item six, ten sixty-one, the Queen's Way? There being none, I will invite a motion to defer.
I'll move the deferral of the items so that they can come back prepared.
Thank you, Mr. Kumarak. A seconder? Thank you, Mr. Palmer. All in favor? Item six has been deferred.
The next deferral file is item number six, which is, oh, sorry, we just did that. Item eight.
Eight.
Sixty-eight Grove Dale Avenue, and we have a deferral request from the agent, Planning and Transportation Services.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Yes, sorry, just a moment, I'm just pulling up the.
Yeah, don't worry.
Detail on this. I'm just, I'll call on you in about twenty seconds.
Okay, sounds good.
So this application is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage, and on the line we have Ida Evangelista. Good morning, Ida.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Ida Evangelista, on behalf of the owners of sixty-eight Grove Dale, I'm just, I'm new to the team. I spoke to Planning. Planning has comments and concerns, and as do transportation, and for this reason, we are requesting a deferral.
Okay, thank you, Ida. Call for a motion on a decision to defer?
I'll move to defer so the applicant has time to process with Planning.
Thank you, Mr. Kumarak. And a seconder?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Ruddock. All in favor? Item eight has been deferred.
Thank you, have a great day.
I guess number thirteen, Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer?
Yes, that's the last one that I'm aware of.
Okay, good. So item number thirteen is forty-six Great Oak Drive. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage, and we do have. Oh, sorry, am I reading the right one? Oh, yeah, yes, I am, yes. Okay, yes, in our, very recently, additional information, we got a request to defer from the applicant. Andrew Plumbow is the agent. Andrew, are you with us?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee and Committee of Adjustment staff. It's Andrew Plumbow of Bean Hall Planning Limited. I am the agent for forty-six Great Oak Drive.
Okay, thank you, Andrew, and could you just confirm your desire to have this matter deferred today?
Yes, I'm here before the committee today to kindly request a deferral for this application in order to allow for sufficient time to address the urban forestry comments that were issued with respect to the proposed development. I am happy to advise that we have already commenced this dialogue directly with urban forestry staff, and we do believe we're on the right path to resolve their concerns, but we just didn't have sufficient time before this hearing in order to resolve these concerns conclusively with staff. So as such, deferral, request for deferral for the next available CVA hearing will allow for sufficient time to satisfy urban forestry's comments. Thank you very much for your time this morning, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Andrew. Is there anyone in the room here today to speak about forty-six Great Oak Drive? No? Then I'll call for a motion on a decision to defer?
Yeah, I'll move to defer to allow discussion with forestry.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Ruddock. All in favor? That is unanimous, the matter has been deferred. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we can now move to the items that are. Did you say not the first? Okay. Item number one, four, two, four, seven, Park Lawn Road. Purpose of the application is to construct a front and rear addition to the existing place of worship. The agent registered to speak today is Jane McFarlane. Jane, are you on the line?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of committee.
Okay, I think we would all benefit from a brief presentation on this, on this item, if you want to proceed.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning. I'm Jane McFarlane, I'm Vice President with Weston Consulting, who represents the Sri Jain Mandir Temple, also known as the S.J.M. Temple, who currently occupies and owns the site at two forty-seven Park Lawn Road. The application before you today is to seek a minor variance to permit a rear, one-story addition to the back of the existing temple, and a front addition, which consists primarily of a religious feature, to be located on the top of the existing roof at the front entranceway to the temple. The application has been submitted concurrently with a site plan control application, which has already gone through three rounds of review from staff. We have sought acceptance from urban design, planning staff, transportation staff, and we only have some minor engineering matters to sort out, hence why we're here today to seek the minor variance. The variances before you are for six variances for lot coverage, FSI, minimum side yard setback on the north side of the lot, for an architectural feature projecting into the front, side yard setback, for roof eaves, and for parking spaces, both for the number of parking and accessible parking spaces at the rear. The parking study has been submitted to justify the rationale and need for the last two variances related to parking. Transportation staff has concerned acceptance of our parking study and have no concern. And really, the, the extension, as outlined in my minor variance letter, is not to increase the GFA and not to add more temple members to the site, it's really for religious and cosmetic reasons, in addition to providing accessibility. Currently, right now, the site, the building is not accessible. There are many older and handicapped members of the temple who need to, and would like to access the, the current temple, so a lot of the reason for the rear addition is to allow for that accessibility and to introduce a new shrine area at the back, which is for prayer only. The main worship areas, sorry, the main worship times is on Sunday from ten to, sorry, eleven to two P.M., and on high holidays. About thirty temple families attend this site on, mostly on Sundays, and sometimes there's additional families who really only attend on high holidays or when families are visiting from India and overseas. The site has good accessibility, it's located on Park Lawn Road, just north, couple blocks north of the Queen's Way. Many of the temple members carpool, they're coming from the, the west GTA, about fifty percent are from Brampton, the other fifty percent are from the Tobico, North York, and the west side of Toronto. I've outlined in detail how the application meets the four tests under the Planning Act, but it's my formal submission before you today, committee, that the proposed application for minor variance meets the intent and purpose of the official plan. The intent and purpose of the applicable zoning bylaw five sixty-nine, twenty thirteen, is desirable for the site and is minor in nature. And that concludes my presentation today.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McFarlane. We do have a number of people that wish to speak to this matter, but before we do, I'll open it up to any questions that the panel may have of you.
For me, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around this in terms of the parking impact. Given the letters of support, which are, I'm assuming, from congregation members and not from local residents, because only two of them are, have a local address, it would appear that there'd be sufficiently more than thirty families or people attending this. Given that, I mean, the parking capacity is probably short, as it is right now, and if the intent is to make this facility handicap accessible, I'm just wondering why you're choosing to only do one handicap spot rather than two, if that's what you're trying to facilitate, because you're not going to be able to facilitate the parking on-site in any case. So I'm just curious on your comments on that.
Yes, thank you, and through the Chair, you are correct, there are thirty letters of support, two of which are the immediate neighbor and another neighbor on Cannon, which is the street to the north. So twenty-eight of the approximate thirty families, not number of people, but families who come, you know, mostly together in one car or carpool with another family, come to the site, some do take transit. The proposed parking is an existing situation, that's the existing parking that's on-site. So the site was surveyed for, by a parking consultant to, and it was surveyed on a Sunday at the main worship time to confirm the utilization on-site. We've only provided one accessible space, really because providing a second accessible space would knock out three additional spaces, almost. The accessible space is under what you see on the screen, under the shrine area, so it's that grade, and then the shrine area is on the, the second story, and so that would provide handicap accessible, accessibility right to the small vestibule and up through the elevator. There are currently, the requirement, sorry, is for two accessible spaces, but optimizing and using the back of the existing lot is really to, the most is to provide one. Currently, the S.J.M. Temple has two members who need wheelchairs to get up, so this would alleviate, you know, part of the problem. And again, we're not, the, the extension is not to add additional members in, but to make the existing template operate more efficiently and add additional capabilities like the accessibility for strollers and for wheelchairs.
Thank you, Ms. McFarlane. Mr. Kumarak, are you satisfied? Okay. Okay, we can now move to interest.
Sorry, I have a question. Sorry, question, Ms. McFarlane, in relation to the existing parking, are you losing any parking spaces here with the addition that's being put on in the rear? I understand you're, you're adding the handicap parking. Are you losing any parking spots, or how many parking spots do you currently have?
Through the Chair, no, we're not, because we're efficiently using the, the grade area below the proposed extension. The amount of parking is similar to what's there today. To be honest, right there, today, there's limited markings, because the back of the site has, you know, been neglected for some time, and we're now bringing it up into standards, so we're not losing any legal parking spaces, because we're using the back of the lot in the, very much the same way that it's being used currently.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have three parties that are interested to speak to this item. I'll call on them one at a time. First is Sean Hatchett, who apparently is in person today. Sean, are you online?
Mr. Chair, let me just refresh, just to make sure that, not, no, I can confirm that Sean Hatchett is not present on WebEx.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move next to Ramesh Jain. Ramesh, are you with us?
Ramesh Jain, you are unmuted. No, they're here.
Am I talking?
They're also here, not talking.
Yes, so we can hear, Ramesh, we can hear you, so you can begin your deputation.
Morning, Ramesh.
Ramesh, stop unmuting and unmuting yourself, I will do that only. So I've unmuted you now again, you can proceed with your deputation.
I'm Ramesh Jain, I'm one of the trustee of the temple, and we have been here.
Ramesh, could you please, before you begin, could you just confirm your address, please?
My address is seventy Saint Lawrence Avenue, in the Tobico.
Thank you, okay.
So, Mr. Chair, is he a representative of the church? Because if he is, the agent's already spoken.
Yes, so we, whatever our agent has spoken, we, we confirm with him, so thank you very much for giving the chance.
Thank you, Ramesh. The third and final speaker, who apparently is going to join us by video, is David Galoppo.
So, Mr. Galoppo, because you requested to be on video, oh, are you, never mind, Mr. Galoppo is here in person. Are you Mr. Galoppo? Okay, so there are some people here that are not registered, but they're in person who will also speak, but first, I will unmute Mr. Galoppo, and I will also make you a panelist temporarily, and, Mr. Galoppo, you can turn your video on. Mr. Galoppo, you're unmuted, and you can turn your video on. Okay, we can see you.
Yeah, I turned my video on right now.
Yeah, we can see you, and we can hear you.
Okay, so I'm here to offer my support.
Sir, sir, Mr. Galoppo, could you please just confirm your address, please?
Yes, sir, my address is sixty-six Cannon Road, Tobico.
Okay, thank you. You can proceed.
Yes, I'm, I'm here to offer my support to the joint temple, and that's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. So Paul, I think you indicated that we have an interested party in the room that wishes to address the committee, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, so if there is anybody here, you can please proceed to the podium, one at a time. Also, just to, before you begin, sir. Also, just to, before you begin, sir, we only want one speaker per household. So if there's multiple households, then that's fine, but only one speaker per household, thank you. And if you can just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kevin McLaren, I live at one oh one Cannon Road, directly behind this Committee members, my wife and I have lived in this community since we were children. The proposal from the S J M Temple will greatly impact my family, family's quality of life. Over the years, they have shown wanton disregard for their neighbors. They have destroyed my personal property along with my neighbors. Their property over the years has been in utter disarray, bottles being thrown onto neighboring properties as well as ours, overgrowth of foliage and weeds and festivals without the common decency of notifying the community and neighbors. I have spoken to several realtors, and the proposed application will greatly decrease, will greatly decrease the value of our home that we have worked so hard for. As per section two hundred dot five dot ten dot one, bylaw five sixty-nine states, a minimum of thirty-four parking spaces is required for this place of worship, and only a total of six parking spaces will be provided per their application. This will create even more traffic chaos in front of our home, as they already flood our streets with cars parking on grass and in front of our home and neighboring properties, as well as making it dangerous for us to get in and out of our driveway. We have called parking enforcement multiple times, while being ticketed, they still have wanton disregard for the law and believe they can park anywhere they desire. They have also intentionally removed sections of my fence and entered my property to remove a section of my tree, along with building materials we had stored against our garage, which they removed, all this without our consent. On October eighth, my wife and I went to the property at two forty-seven Park Lawn to speak about this issue. We were told they had permission from an old lady who lives at our home. This is a hundred percent false, since the only commission they had brought to us was through our old, twenty-two-year-old daughter, who said her parents weren't home and instructed them to write a letter and put it in the mailbox, which was never done. We, like everyone in our community, value our privacy. The proposed structure will all but eliminate any chance of having a private life. This will give direct visual access into our bathroom, bedroom, and kitchen, not to mention our entire backyard. I have a hot tub in my backyard, which my daughters and my wife will not feel comfortable to enjoy. The proposed structure will greatly encroach on our property. Everything about this proposal is trying to manipulate the bylaws to their benefit. As per section ten point five point four zero point six five A, a bylaw five nine, five six nine two one three, an architectural feeling, feature of the building may encroach into a required building setback, a minimum of point six meters. If it is not close, no closer to a lot line than point three, this proposed feature will encroach one point one seven meters into the front yard and will be located three point three seven meters from a front hot line, lot line. In closing, I would just like to say, on behalf of my wife, children, my wife and children, we ask that this proposal be denied. It will not serve anyone in this community other than the applicant.
Thank you, sir. Could you just hold on for a moment, in case there are any questions of you from the panel? We're good? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If there's anybody else from a different household, please approach the podium.
Good morning. My name is Diane Parwiki, and I reside at ninety-seven Cannon Road. My backyard is adjacent to their parking lot. I did submit written objections to this proposal, but I will just reiterate and agree with everything that a previous speaker has spoken to you about, and I would like to reiterate that for safety and congestion of parking on our streets is totally unacceptable with, this extension is totally unacceptable, because it will reduce their parking to basically zero. There are maybe eight to ten spots in the back right now, and they use it as parking, but, you know, putting up an extension, it will totally remove any parking at all at the back. I also stated in my, in my written submission to you that, not only that the parking, but they do park on both sides of my street, Cannon Road, that has no, Cannon Road has no sidewalks, and when they're present, and which was almost every day in the past four weeks, that they had all kinds of activities at this temple, there was impossible for us to either walk on the streets or drive out. And I have a ninety-eight-year-old mother living with me. Sometimes I need to call for an ambulance, sometimes I need to take her to the doctors or the emergency, and I can't get out, especially in, in, in the winter. So something has to be done, either the city has to put up the signs on the street that there is no parking, or just simply do something about it with, with this temple. So my other two issues were that, yes, addition will, will really change the views, it will obstruct our views into the environment. They're also destroyed my use, just like my next, next-door neighbors. It's really having a lot of, putting a lot of stress on, on a lot of neighbors in this area. So I strongly urge you and encourage you to please give them other options, but stop this addition as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry, ma'am, just for a second, are there any questions of the speaker? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we can now take this matter into committee for, oh, yes, sorry, Ms. McFarlane. I'm a brand-new chair, if that's not evident. Would you please rebut the comments that have been made by the speakers this morning?
Certainly. And thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for, for those comments from the two residents at Cannon. With respect to Mr. McLaren at one oh one Cannon, I know that members of the S J M visited your site, sorry, visited your property three times in the spring and left letters attempting to contact yourself about this proposal. We also tried to reach out twice after we received your written letter on the application, which came in at the end of September. I know that there was some resistance to speak to my clients. In any event, I understand, and I have photographs, that a new fence up to the maximum limit that the fence bylaw allows has been constructed along the north lot line of the subject lands, which is shared with the rear property line of one oh one and partially of ninety-seven Cannon. So hoping that that new, brand-new fence will alleviate some of your concerns with, with trespassing and with the disarray that the fence has been in for some time. Furthermore, I just would like to point out that the proposed extension does not have any windows facing north. The extension is not exceeding the height limit as permitted by the bylaw. The proposed extension has a height of seven point two nine meters, which is below the height permissions in the bylaw of nine point five meters. So we're not, the, my clients are not asking to exceed that height limit, and any structure that could be built on the property as a right could be constructed up to nine point five meters, which is over two more meters than what we're proposing. With the limited of windows, the, you know, the new fence, the maintenance of, or the keeping of the proposed extension within the height limits mandated by the bylaw, you know, there should be no undue impact created by the extension to the, the existing facility on the site. You know, we understand that there are parking issues, you know, there are many religious facilities all along Park Lawn Road, but religious facilities are an important part of Tor, City of Toronto's neighborhoods. The official plan stipulates how they play a vital role, especially in our communities today, for offering social services, for getting people together, for offering, you know, a place to, to seek these services and other people, and reduce loneliness, plus all the other important religious aspects that they have. And this really is a special place for the Jan community, and really hoping that the community would, would see this this way as well. So that's in response to the one oh one, and just very quickly in response to the comments raised by the resident of ninety-seven Cannon Road. No, we are certainly not reducing parking. We are keeping it the same, and actually, we're removing one of the rear sheds that's currently in the rear yard, and will even allow more maneuverability in the back there for the parking. So we're not proposing to introduce more people, we're not proposing to introduce more cars. Really, this proposal is for religious and accessibility reasons and to create, you know, a good shrine for the existing place of worship. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McFarlane. Are there any questions from the panel for Ms. McFarlane?
I do have a few, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to go through the, some of the variances. I'm actually surprised there's no height variance, but I'm glad you clarified that. With regards to variance, number, I think it's number four, with regards to side yard setback, is that an existing situation?
Yes, through the chair, sir, yes, I believe that's variance three. So the, the proposed side yard setback of zero point nine two on the north side is existing, yes.
Okay, and also, the roof ease encroachment is an existing situation, or is that going to be a new situation created, variance four?
Yes, sir, it's existing and proposed.
Okay, and then variance five, which requests a variance for a front yard setback, that's strictly to do with the addition going over top of the existing roof? It has nothing to do with the rear addition, I'm assuming?
Through the chair, yes, sir, that's correct. It's for the religious shikara at the front, which is to be located on the, the front of the existing roof to the temple that's existing today.
So you're just adding height to the front, you're not adding footprint to the front?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ruddock or Mr. Palmer, do either of you have any questions? Okay, just before, we'll take this matter into committee for potential discussion and decision. Before we do that, I'll just point out that in addition to what we've learned today, we have a condition requested by urban forestry for their condition two regarding a private tree. And in addition to the letters of support, we have an eight-signature petition requesting gates to be installed at the two entrances to the parking lot. And I would just point out that this committee has no jurisdiction to require gates, that would be a civil matter, but I just sort of, you know, want to point that out before we proceed any further. So, let's move into committee then, panel, and discussion or for a decision.
I just wanted to make one similar comment. I believe one of the opponents also suggested that we change the parking signage on the opposite side of Park Lawn, which, again, we have no authority to do, but the local residents can certainly contact their local councillor to address that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Coomer.
Yeah, just a comment. It appears a lot of the opposition has to do with parking, and the applicant confirmed that they're not reducing the amount of parking they're providing. They're just clarifying, I think, through the site plan and through removal of the shed, so that they're not making the situation worse. It's an existing situation, and it appears a lot of the complaints about this are civil or bylaw enforcement in nature, rather than on the variances being requested, my observation.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I was surprised by the parking. I thought there was a reduction. I'm just trying to read the transportation report, because I thought they were reducing the number of spots. Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the, the impact that this is going to have on the properties facing to the back and to the north, the visual impact, but again, to my surprise, actually, there is no variance that, that is addressing that. So it's hard for us to kind of discount that, because it's within the height limit.
Ms. Ruddock, any comments, or should we, if anyone's ready for a motion on this? Okay, thank you. Okay, we need a decision.
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to move for approval. Variance is requested, are minor in nature and meet the four tests in the Planning Act, and that's subject to forestry condition number two.
You're a seconder for Mr. Palmer's motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
All in favor? That is approved unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McFarlane. We'll now proceed to item two, Seven Willowbrook Road.
And I am the agent...
Just a moment, I just have a couple of more. Years ago, I was told to always use a mouse with a computer, I always ignored that device. So please be patient while I finger my way through this. To construct a one-story rear addition, we have urban forestry condition one, we have a Metro Links advisory, and we have a planning report for information. Four variances are requested. Looks pretty straightforward, I don't believe we need an elaborate presentation. Shahid Nanavati, are you online?
Yes, sir. My name is Shahid Nanavati, and I am the representative for, agent for Seven Willowbrook.
And your address is?
My address is one three zero four Woodbine Avenue, sir.
Okay, thank you. I, I guess we can, unless there's anything you wish to highlight on this, we could potentially proceed with questions from the panel. As I said, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I'll answer any questions that the panel or yourself asks.
Okay, then. So panel, are there any questions of Mr. Nanavati? If not, then we'll go into committee for a decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I find the application to meet the four tests, and would like to move approval subject to forestry condition one.
You're a seconder?
I'll second.
Ms. Ruddock, thank you. All in favor? Unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Nanavati.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, our next item is 26 Burnhamthorpe Park Boulevard. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. The only thing we have on file related to this is Urban Forestry who recommends that we either refuse the application or impose their condition two. And, uh, we have Mr. Ira Kagan, agent, standing at the microphone. Mr. Kagan, welcome.
Good morning, everyone.
Um, I, I guess this warrants a, a, a brief presentation from you, sir?
Thank you very much. My name is Ira Kagan. I'm the agent of the owner Sarah Kagan, who is in the audience with her fiance. Uh, I'm also a lawyer. Uh, she purchased the property back in June. She would like to replace the existing older one and a half story home with a more modern two-story home. I had provided in my presentation pictures of a number of properties in the area just to demonstrate the eclectic nature of the homes in the area. If you go to the presentation starting at, uh, page 11, you'll start to see photos of the homes in the area. They range in height from one and a half stories to two stories, and there's even one that's two and a half stories. Most of them have detached garages, some don't. The existing home does not have a detached garage. It has a garage shed in the backyard. You can see it there in the background of the picture, the home, the subject property is the home on the right, and that, uh, shed in the backyard is going to be, uh, removed. There'll be landscaping back there and there'll be a detached garage on the left side of the picture instead. My client did meet with the neighbors. We were aware that one would send a letter of support. We weren't aware that one would send a letter of opposition, but one was sent. We looked at the letter. It's all about the construction of the house and not about any of the variances, which I know your committee doesn't have jurisdiction over, and I know the City of Toronto will ensure is done properly through building permit application. Um, now with respect to the forestry comment, I actually spoke to the, um, author Max Dida after it was sent because I was very surprised by it, um, because, and I want to talk first about the, about, uh, his recommendation to refuse two of the variances. I talked to him about that and I said, "Why would you do that? The existing house on the plan shown in red is closer to the tree than the new house. We're doing everything we can to protect the tree." He said, "Well, the people that went out there didn't know that." So he said, "The committee will probably ignore that comment, but the committee may want to impose the condition." So then I asked him about the condition. I said, "There's an existing driveway. In fact, you can see it there, and on the plans you can see the, um..." Oh, the word escapes me. The circle that goes around the tree there, oh, the drip line. There we go, the drip line. It demonstrates the drip line is really right at the driveway. So that's the driveway that can be used for construction. That's the location of the new driveway at the start of the street, but then it curves after you pass the tree. I, I said to him, "Why are you even making us file the, uh, uh, permit to injure or destroy a tree as a condition of the variance when we have no intention to injure or destroy a tree and we're using the same driveway that's there right now and the bill, the new house is going to be further away from the tree?" He said, "You didn't show the existing driveway on the existing plans, and had you done that, my, my comment might have been different. It's too late now. I understand that. We didn't show it. That was our fault. We apologize, but anybody looking at the drawings or visiting the site would see, we're not going to hurt this tree." Now, if there's a permit required as part of the building permit process, we'll have to apply for that, but to make it a condition of the variance, I don't see how it's reasonable or required. I would like to address one variance, uh, in particular, which is the first one, and I'm just going to ask for a wording change. It's not a new variance, it's a wording change to the exact same provision of the bylaw that we applied for. So the, the provision of the bylaw that we applied for has a long series of numbers and then a letter at the end, A, and in that section of the bylaw, it says that the maximum height of main walls is seven meters, and we're asking for 7.6 meters. So the variance is exactly the same, but in the notice that went out, the wording is that the new dwelling will have a front exterior main wall height of 7.6 meters. And it's the front exterior words that I don't think are right because if you read this exact section of the bylaw, which is where we need relief from, it actually doesn't mention front wall. It just says main wall. So I don't want there to be a problem when we go for our building permit. So my recommendation is, if, if you don't mind, is that when you word your decision, if you approve it, just say that the new dwelling will have a height of 7.6 meters for the main wall, which is exactly the section of the bylaw that we asked for the, um, variance from. And I know, I, I understand that there's always a concern if we're asking for a new variance. I want to say again, this is not a new variance. It's the same section of the same bylaw, just removing the word front exterior.
So, Mr. Chair, that could be misleading because then that height variance could apply to the rear wall, not the front? And this wording is taken off the zoning review submitted by the applicant?
It wasn't a zoning review, it was a waiver.
Sorry, waiver. The waiver submitted by the applicant.
The, the, the difficulty, Mr. Chair, is, is that the section of the bylaw that we saw the variance from, which is the correct section, doesn't mention the word front wall. It only mentions the words main wall. So the drawings are the same, you can, you can have the decision attach the drawings. It's not a different house in any way. It's just the way in which it was, it was worded in the waiver.
Right, but the applicant chose to submit a waiver, and that's the wording that they submitted on the waiver.
Yeah, I'm not arguing about that, and I'm not saying it isn't our fault. I'm saying there is no need for a new notice because it's the same section of the bylaw which speaks to main walls and it's the same building.
But if a neighbor on either side or to the rear had a concern, the notice only indicated that the variance was only to the front. If we take out front exterior, then that could be interpreted that the variance could be on the side or the rear as well.
Mr. Chairman, if you have a concern with the change, you can leave it the way it is. I'm simply indicating that it's not, it doesn't match the wording of the bylaw itself, and I didn't want to have a problem getting a building permit. With res- with respect to the other variances, Mr. Chairman, I've put charts in the presentation which, which show, uh, that the variances being requested are exceedingly minor, and where there were other variances on the street seeking similar relief, they're less than any of the other variances on the street. So for those reasons, there's no impact. All the four tests are met, and I respectfully request that you approve the variance without the forestry condition.
Okay, I'm just gonna, if you'll just stay there, I'm gonna open it up for panel questions, but just before I do, uh, with respect to your concerns about urban forestry, uh, we typically do not reject their advice to us. So if this proceeded to approval, um, expect that we would impose condition two of urban forestry. And it sounds to me from your remarks that you shouldn't have a problem with them because they didn't have the right information, um, about the location of the driveway, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't, sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, but we just wouldn't accept your advice to not impose that condition, so I'm putting that out in front.
I, I understand.
If approved, it'll have that condition.
I understand, sir.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, panel, any questions of Mr. Kagan? Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, Mr. Kagan, um, just want to clarify, for the variance you're requesting clarification or wording change on, does that only apply to the front wall or does it apply to the rear wall as well?
No, it doesn't. It does not apply to the rear wall. The section of the bylaw specifies that the main walls of the dwelling cannot be greater than seven meters. And so by specifying that it's only the front wall in the variance, it doesn't match the wording in the bylaw.
It's not about matching the wording. No, but the, the notice went out specifying only the front wall, and I'm looking at drawing number A7, which is, I believe, the rear elevation, and it shows rear main wall height 7.6 meters. So in my mind, it appears that the notice is incorrect and doesn't match the variances, and we should maybe defer this item?
We, we do not need a variance to the rear wall, which is why it wasn't applied for.
Uh, if you want to build in accordance with what's on drawing A7, I would think you might need...
No, we, we've confirmed with the Buildings Department that in fact there is no rear wall variance needed, so that's why we don't need a specific variance that mentions rear wall.
But you, it sounds like you need the general variance. And I think that's the point that Neil's trying to make, is that you're, you've asked for variance for the front portion of your main wall only, because that's the way the notice is worded, but you're now asking for us to approve a variance for all the main walls.
No. Section A of the bylaw does not talk about all the main walls. Mr. Chairman, I will, I will withdraw the request because we have asked for the variances that we believe we need. We just didn't word it exactly the way the bylaw states it. There is no variance for the rear wall. We're not trying to do a bait and switch. My only concern was that when I went to the Building Department, they would say, "Your variance says front wall. The bylaw says main walls. You gotta go back and get a new variance." That's what I wanted to avoid. I don't want a deferral because if I'm wrong about my concern, I've then further delayed this process for no good reason.
So you'd be satisfied to proceed with variance four as currently worded?
I would have preferred otherwise, but if the committee has a concern that I'm all of a sudden making the rear wall higher, then no, I don't want you to be concerned about that. That wasn't the intention.
Any other comments, questions?
Yes, um, I also have a comment or question, well, both, with regard to forestry. Um, forestry is actually asking for two conditions because in their general, um, memo, they're also asking for condition two. Do you have any private trees?
The only tree is the public tree on public property at the very front of the site, almost on the street.
You don't have a tree at the rear?
There are perimeter trees. They're at the very far end of the site, like the, the far rear yard.
Boundary trees, so they'd be on the...
They're boundary trees, yes.
Because i- i- in their general memo to us, they've also requested condition two, which is private tree. So I'm just trying to understand why.
I, I don't know. I didn't talk to Mr. Dida about that because there was no private tree where the house is going to go or anywhere near where the house is going to go.
Unless they're thinking you're going to be impacting one of the neighbor's trees.
Well, when, when we make the application for the, well, we're not going to injure the tree, but I guess we have to demonstrate to the city through an arborist report that we're not going to injure the tree. That arborist report would also identify that there are no privately owned trees that are going to be injured.
Okay, just trying to...
I, I was, I was as confused by the comment as you were. Sorry, it, it was almost, it was almost as if the person that visited the site, like, if they just called us and asked us, I think we could have got this resolved, but it didn't happen. And we also got the comment after the closing date of making submissions, even though it was dated four days earlier. So by the time we reacted, it was too late for us to do anything about it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I noticed we do not have any registered speakers, uh, online. I'm just wondering, is anyone in the room here to speak to 26 Burnhamthorpe Park Boulevard? No one? Okay. Um, okay, thanks, Mr. Kagan.
Thank you.
So let's, uh, let's move into committee then for more discussion if required or a Mr. Coomer?
I, I have no problem with the application, um, as it's presented. I just confused as to what forestry conditions we should be imposing now, um, because the way I'm reading it, it should be forestry one and two.
Okay. I, I don't see where you got number one. I only see number two. Are you, are you going from their consolidated memo?
It's the consolidated memo plus the standalone memo that then asks for the additional condition.
The consolidated memo asks for condition two, um, two, and then the, um, the letter which says to refuse or alternately to, uh, impose condition one.
Uh, yeah, that happens once in a while, doesn't it? Well, our, our typical practice is to require that because they've requested it, and then it's up to the agent to, uh, to negotiate it.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments?
It, it, it's just like one section of forestry is not talking to the other or something.
Yeah.
Be inclined to, to have one and two to, for any, if they find any private or, or public trees, to include both rather than leave any out.
Yeah. Well, as I said to Mr. Kagan, we, we, we don't disregard or ignore forestry's comments, so if we, if you proceed to a motion to approve, I would suggest that one and two is, is the way to go, and then it's up to the agent to discuss, uh, the implications and the resolution with urban forestry, so, um, are we ready for a decision then, a motion to decide?
Yeah, I mean, I'm good. I believe it meets the four tests and it should be approved and like to move approval. Um, subject to forestry conditions one and two then.
You're a seconder?
I'll second that.
Ms. Riddick, thank you. All in favor? The application is approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Kagan. We will now move to item five, 33 Fairfield Avenue. Purpose is to construct a two-story rear addition, addition and a new rear deck. We have, um, urban forestry conditions two, four, and one. Two and four from the consolidated memo, number one from a, a separate memo. Rock Kim is the agent. Mr. Kim, are you online?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's only one variance, but it proposes to almost double the floor space index, so, uh, I, I think minimally you need to explain why you think that's justified to almost double the floor space index. So could you please spend a minute or two justifying your, your request here?
Yeah, our adjacent neighbor, 31 east side of the house, 31 Fairfield, made the almost same side of the rear yards.
Sorry, Mr. Kim, before you just proceed, can you just confirm your address, please?
Uh, 386 Young Street.
What's 1402? I've got 1402 here as well.
Unit 1402.
Okay, thank you. All right, proceed.
Yeah. And then, uh, on the neighbor, neighbor's house, they already got approved, uh, 39, 43, 45, 51, all the house has been, sizes are bigger than our house.
So you're saying that you believe what you're proposing here is compatible with what's going on in the immediate vicinity?
As with the neighbors, it's all similar house.
Any questions for Mr. Kim from the panel? I don't see any. We don't, again, we don't have any registered speakers online?
Yeah, just, uh, forestry condition four, it, they're basically asking us to defer. Um, so just wondering what conversations you've had with them and how you've been able to address their concerns.
Mr. Kim, did you hear that question?
Forest, uh, there is at the front of the house, the big trees, but we aren't, we are not touching anything at the front of the house part. We are the rear side of the house addition. We are the rear side of the house addition. As per the satisfaction of the long branch neighborhood character guideline, we, we're not touching any front existing house character.
Follow up, Mr. Coomer. Urban forestry says they request deferral to, uh, enable the applicant to provide them with the necessary information to confirm whether the following bylaw protected, protected trees can be adequately protected.
We're gonna get the approval from the, uh, uh, urban forestry with the arborist report?
Mr. Chair, they also proposed an alternative condition one, right?
And two elsewhere.
And one and two elsewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'm good.
If there's no discussion, I'm prepared to move a motion in this regard. So a motion to approve this application, subject to forest, forestry conditions number one and two.
Is there a secondor for Ms. Riddick's motion? Mr. Palmer, thank you. All in favor? That's unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Kim.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item seven. Sixty-three Ravenscrest Drive.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, just a moment, please. The purpose is to construct a second story addition, a one-story front and rear addition and a rear yard covered deck. There are five variances. And, um, sorry, number seven. Yeah, we have urban forestry condition two and a planning con- condition to construct as illustrated on the site plan as it relates to the rear yard setback. The agent is Patrick Cott. And, um, Patrick, are you online?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am.
Okay, I, I noticed you did not pre-register to speak today. So it suggests, should you be an agent in future, that you do that. It's important for us to know in advance who is lined up to speak to applications.
My apologies for that.
Is this, is this your first time here?
Uh, no, I've done a couple. I just, I'm not sure if I received the pre-registration, but that's my apologies again.
Okay. Okay, uh, if, if you could just make a, a brief presentation on your proposal here. I guess, I guess potentially an, an issue that you should address is variance four. You're, you're exceeding the, um, west main wall height by a considerable margin, so please address that and anything, anything else that you think might help us make a decision on this? Go ahead.
So my name is Patrick Cott of thirty Woodlawn Avenue in Mississauga, Ontario. I am here to present the homeowners of sixty-three Raven Crest Drive in Etobicoke, Ontario. The proposal is to construct a second floor addition and a rear covered porch. Zoning relief is required for the building height, floor area and rear setbacks for a covered porch. For the building heights, the, the building height variances for both overall height and main wall heights is required because the dwelling has an existing first floor height that is almost a full meter above grade. Uh, lowering the floor is not desired because of the extra, uh, construction costs as well as reducing the existing basement height to five and a half feet. Uh, the roof has already been lowered as much as possible so that the existing first floor height can be maintained as well as accommodating a reasonable floor height for, of nine feet for the second floor addition. We believe that the design and the slope of the roof, uh, has been designed so that it reduces the massing of the proposal from the front in exchange for additional white heights on the, on one of the sides. So on one of the sides, we have basically a gable roof and a lot of, a, a, a big portion of it is basically slope, so it has have a, a high height, but is, um, decreased in height on, on each side due to the slope. As for the, the maximum for, for space variance, it's required because we are designing the second floor directly above the existing main exterior walls as well as providing the, the necessary rooms for the homeowners and their growing families. The existing setbacks for the front and sides have been maintained in respect to our neighbors on each side and minimizes the effects, uh, of the increase of mass to the property. The rear covered porch, uh, the variance for the rear cover porch is required because the clients have desired interest for outdoor living space. The area of the porch complies with lot coverage requirements, but due to the angle of the property and location of the existing dwelling, it is not possible to reduce the setbacks of the porch without sacrificing the desired covered area. Uh, the proposed porch is designed with a flat roof to reduce the massing of the structure in respect to the neighbors on each side. Also in regards, I guess, to the building height, um, we did use sloped roofs just to kind of match the design of the neighborhood and, and the surrounding dwellings around us. The increase of main floor wall height is only on one side and that's the side of the, the newly built home to, I believe, the east of us. We've also received two letters of support, one from our immediate neighbor to the west sixty-five Raven Crest Drive and another neighbor, a few, a couple houses down on seventy-one Raven Crest Drive. Uh, I thank the committee for your consideration on our application today. This project was designed to be habitated by our current property owners long term, which we would like to consider since the sites achieves their personal and lively needs. Believe this also passes all four planning tests and we hope I could answer any questions we now have.
Thank you, Mr. Cott. Panel, any questions for Mr. Cott? None? And there does not appear to be any registered speakers with respect to this item. I would ask if there's anyone in the room here to speak to sixty-three Ravenscrest Drive? No? Okay, then I guess we can move into committee for discussion if required and, uh, otherwise a decision.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. Um, I think the planning report addresses the issue of the building height as well as a setback. And that's why they, um, are requesting the condition to tie it to, uh, the plans. I'm just not sure why they didn't. Well, what I would suggest is that we tie it not just as it relates to the rear yard setback, but also to the building height because as the planning report points out, that it's only, um, one particular peak that exceeds that, that height.
We can certainly do that if that is your wish.
Is that okay, Madam Chair, if we, uh, add to the planning, uh, condition? Yeah, thank you. So unless there's anyone have any other comments or questions, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay, proceed.
I'd like to, um, propose we approve. I believe it meets the four tests. And I'd like to make it subject to forestry condition two and subject to the planning condition, um, which is asking for it to be as illustrated on the site plan of August sixteenth twenty-three as related to rear yard setback and building height.
Thank you, Mr. Coomer. Is there a secondor for Mr. Coomer?
Sorry, if it's for building height, do you want it to be the elevations as well? Or one of the elevations?
I guess, yeah, would need to be that one elevation that has that peak roof.
Is it the front, rear or side?
Just.
The front?
Let me go to the plans. Sorry. I believe it's the front.
Uh, they both have one?
They both have.
The front and rear?
Yeah.
Okay, so the planning condition as it's worded and also add in there the front and rear elevations.
Okay. You good with that? Mr. Palmer?
Sorry, sorry, are, are you concerned about the sidewall height as well, which is nine point one meters for fifty-five percent?
Well, I, I, I think all the walls have peaks, um, so maybe, um, if I could ask the applicant if they have an issue of us tying it to the elevations in addition to the site plan? I mean, you're gonna build it as, as shown, I'm assuming?
Uh, it's just the front of wall and then the west sidewall, I believe.
That have that height?
The front main wall and, yeah, exactly. I, I believe, I'm pretty sure.
But you, but you, you know, but rather than us trying to figure that out right now, you're okay if we tie it to all?
Yeah, you can do all the versions.
Perfect, done.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Is there a secondor for Mr. Coomer's motion?
Sorry, I forgot what the motion was.
Mr. Coomer, could you please restate?
So, so we're, uh, approval is subject to forestry condition two and subject to, um, planning condition of tying it to site plan of August sixteenth twenty-three as well as tying it to the elevations. So the site, the site plan speaking to the rear yard setback and the elevation speaking to the building height. Sort of.
I'll, I'll second.
All in favor? That motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Cott.
I'm sure staff will come up with a better, with a more fluent wording on that.
Can we just take maybe a ten-minute, fifteen-minute break?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, we will recess for, um, your suggestion, Madam Deputy Secretary of Treasury. For how long?
Maybe ten or fifteen minutes.
Let's go fifteen. We will be back. No, eleven twenty-seven. No, eleven twenty-seven.
The busy number, no?
Yeah, I guess I'm getting more married. No, yeah, I didn't want to.
Like- Because of your employment, I would, like, plus four hundred.
Do you not?
I just don't know because-
You don't check?
Because, like, me and my gift, we-
Do you not make anything?
Right?
Do you not make anything?
Yeah, I just don't check.
Is this the reason?
I was asking. Um, you know, I was like, I was like, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
My ten sixty-one, that one is, yeah. I know, she isn't, yeah. The good for the person, it's small. I'm trying to start with this. Oh, no, it's different. I'm trying to, well, I can't remember. I'm, I'm, it's, it was a friend, it's true. Yeah, what is it best? Because I'm interested in that. We have some questions.
No.
So. Um, because they're saying they just want some, or some, just, basically, just, yeah.
This is for rescue.
Yeah, it's totally, like, before it's very harsh.
So, maybe you apply.
It's like, uh, it would be, should be rather, to have more factors on this, or something like that.
This one. Which means, I'm not, you know, that's what her biohazard is. She's straight for them. No, it's just, that's perhaps, you know, biohazard, some, I suppose, probably, some of those that do not. You're offering to block now?
Mm-hmm.
No, I mean, someone never saw it, it's just, oh, anyways, you know, maybe, you know, that, um, the ship, right? So, we want to go over, go over. Where the beer stores? Where the beer stores? There's that loft inside, that, as a kind of back use.
Okay, proceeding with agenda item ten. Oh, my camera. What, you think people want to see me? Okay, enjoy that. Four sixty-two, The King's Way. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are seven variances, and we have, uh, urban forestry requesting their conditions, one and two. We have, uh, clearances from transportation and a planning report for information. And we have listed as the agent Peter Giordano. Oh, yes, and we have a letter of opposition as well, thank you. Mr. Giordano, are you available to us, to speak to us today?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, we can. Yeah, if you could proceed with, uh, a bit of, uh, a, a presentation to help us understand what you're proposing here. Personally, I'm interested, uh, in the, um, rear and s- side yard adjustments that you're requesting. Uh, but anyway, beyond that, if you can, uh, proceed with telling us why we should consider this application favorably.
Absolutely. Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Peter Giordano, David Small Designs, Latino Five Cornwall Road, Knoxville, we're the authorized agents and the designers for this project. Um, can I ask the moderator to advance my presentation slides to slide number two, please? Um, so, sorry, um, Mr. Chair, I heard you mention the rear yard, uh, we don't have a rear yard variance, could I just get?
Oh, sorry, I meant, yes, you are correct, I meant front yard, uh, variance three and four, front and side.
Perfect, okay, great. So, we're, we're here today requesting consideration on the variance items you final listed on your hearing notice. Um, the subject property is a large rectangular lot facing a busy arterial road. Uh, quick drive along the road exposes eclectic architectural style, sizes, and properties in transition with obvious redevelopment happening. I, I've noted a few of the, uh, recently built, there's, I think, one off the screen as well. Um, we've had the opportunity to review and discuss our proposal with the planner assigned to our application, and staff comments, you'd see that they expressed no concerns and find our items to be appropriate development. Uh, slide number three, please. While we understand our decision, that, while we understand decisions made by the committee are not governed by precedence, we would use the neighbor as a comparison for compatibility. Um, as such, I've included a recent approval at the Committee of Adjustments in the spring of last year for our neighbor to the north, immediate neighbor, four sixty-four, The King's Way. We find it a good comparison with similar items previously approved. Um, at this time, I'd note that this, uh, reference project also belongs to the neighbor that provided a letter of opposition for application. Um, while items on our list include FSI, front yard, side yard setbacks, our requests are better or less impactful than those previously approved at four sixty-four, The King's Way. The letter of opposition from the neighbor focuses on the coverage figure. I'd like to make clear that our coverage figure includes the entire area of the covered porch at the back, since there's habitable space below. While our, our neighbors, um, have made an application, or got approved an application, that excluded the, the, the porch behind, um, because it was less than five percent of the total coverage and, and was left unexcavated below. This space below, um, has little or no, um, uh, um, sorry, has little or no impact on the physical massing of our dwelling. Um, if this space were left unexcavated, our coverage item, or coverage total would be only thirty-three point one-one percent. Can I ask you to, uh, proceed to slide number eleven, please? We have some three D elevations. And then slide number eleven, on the slide, you'll, you can see the comparison of the two properties. I've shown the neighbor's property in plan and in elevation off to the, uh, right side of the page. Um, and you'll also see that there's a, the summary of the variances that we've included in here. Um, our clients is, are building the home for themselves and for their in-laws. As a multi-generational home, including seniors, there's immediate need for walker access to all rooms. The design of this home is intended to accommodate most, most rooms with wider space and provide barrier-free design. Um, although item number four requests, uh, side yard variance, um, I will point out that it's only that small projection of the garage on the, uh, south side, or the left side, that, uh, reduces the side yard setback, uh, to one point eight-one meters. The rest of the house, the entire right side, or north side, and then the remainder of the south side, or left side, is all in compliance at two point four-one meters as side yard setback. Transportation supports our variance item number seven for a widened, uh, driveway. It simply aligns to match the front garage facade, and it reduces to only five meters in width well before reaching the city's own, uh, city-owned portion of the lot. It also moves almost two meters further away from city tree number three in that lower left corner. Variance item number six is simply a water feature in the front yard, um, and it's defined as an auxiliary structure. Um, our clients have lived in this neighborhood for over six years, and you'll see, um, back on slide number four, um, on my presentation, that the clients have approached nineteen of their closest neighbors with strong, uh, support expressed by most.
Do you, Mr. Giordano, you have ten seconds to wrap up?
Absolutely, yep, we've worked hard to produce a well-articulated home, compatible with the neighborhood, planning and forestry, transportation expressed no concerns. Uh, with that said, we believe our application to be, uh, appropriate and minor in nature.
Thank you very much. Panel, any questions for Mr. Giordano?
I have a question and a comment, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Um, I'll start with my comment. Um, you've provided a as-of-right diagram, which I always find helpful. Um, I would find it most helpful if you would actually, uh, superimpose it on top of your application, so we could have some proper context. Just a comment. My question, uh, pertains to the front yard setback, and I would like, um, if you could give us examples of similar front yard setbacks, uh, other than the next-door neighbor.
Mr. Chair, uh, through you to Mr. Kumerak. Um, I don't have examples other than the neighbor, the neighbor, uh, got approved the front yard setback that is, um, further, uh, encroaching towards the front than ours, um, but I, I, I don't, uh, properly have that, uh, information available.
Good, thank you. Any other comments or questions of Mr. Giordano?
Yeah, a question regarding the side yard setback, just for clarification, that really applies to the, uh, garage portion of that yard, is that correct?
That's correct, it's only that section, I believe it's about twelve foot six long on the, on the left side, it, it projects an additional foot into the side yard, it's only that projected portion that reduces to one point eight-one, the rest of the house complies.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for questions? Uh, I see that we do not have any registered speakers on our speakers list. Is anyone in the room here to speak about four sixty-two, The King's Way? No? Um, okay, then we can move into committee for, uh, discussion and a decision.
If we can go back to a question, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
So, I just, I'm trying to un- understand the purpose of the front yard setback, is that just so that you wouldn't have a rear yard setback?
Yeah, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, um, yes, it, it's really to attempt to get more rear yard space, because with the, uh, the covered porch in the back and the pool, it limited the amount of space that we had in the rear, so we, we projected it further forwards, also be, to be, um, compatible with the new development on the, on the north side of the property, but, uh, yes, that, that would have been the purpose.
Okay, uh, yeah, well, it's hard to fit a five and a half thousand, five and, five thousand seven hundred square foot house onto that size lot, so, understood.
Okay, can we have a motion?
Yeah, I will, uh, move for approval. Variants is requested are minor in nature and meet the four tests in the Planning Act, and that's subject to forestry conditions one and two.
Seconder for Mr. Palmer's motion?
I'll second.
Ms. Riddick, thank you. All in favor? Are you in favor, sir?
I'm not.
Okay. Uh, by a vote of three to one, the motion is, uh, is approved, adopted. Thank you, Mr. Giordano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee.
Okay, moving to item eleven, twenty-four Stanley Avenue. The purpose is to construct a rear sunroom addition, we have one variance to increase the length of the building by two point one-five meters. Um, and we have, um, the planning department recommending refusal. Uh, we have Agent Danya Abasiliasi.
Mr. Chair, uh, the agent has requested to also appear on video. So, uh, Danya, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna unmute you now, and I'm going to temporarily make you a panelist, which should take effect right now, and you can turn on your video at this time.
Hello, Danya, we can see you.
Danya, I think you muted yourself, so can you unmute yourself? There you go.
Hi, thank you very much.
Okay, so, uh, Danya, I'm sure you're familiar with the community planning report and the reasons that they cite to support their recommendations for refusal, so could you, um, tell us a bit about your application and, uh, and what you think about the planning department's report?
Yes. Hello, Mr. Chair and, uh, Committee of Adjustment staff, this is Danya Abasiliasi. I'm just presenting today on behalf of the owner for the property address twenty-four Stanley Avenue, uh, to propose of the application to construct a rear three-season sunroom addition. And this request is variances to the zoning by law for the maximum permitted dwelling length is seventeen, and the alternate, alternate dwelling will have a length of nineteen point fifteen meters. Uh, so, uh, based on the bylaw definition and the nature of the living space, I just wanna explain a little more about the general, uh, definition of the living space. Uh, according to the expert, living space should be a heated, enclosed, and covered area of the home. In Canada, where in winter can be harsh, having proper heating and insulation in li- any living space is essential. Without this feature, room may not be suitable for year-round use. If a space lack in heating, it may not meet the requirements of living space, and it may only be usable for a limited portion of the year. Additionally, the spaces will only qualify as a living area if heated, because it will probably only be useful for just a few months of the year. You may also have heard of four-season sunroom or three-season sunroom, which we propose three-season sunroom in our proposal. A three-season sunroom is meant to be used for three out of the four season of the year, generally spring to fall, because it offers little protection against extreme temperature like heat and cold. A three-season sunroom is ideal in mild climate, where the winter is not very cold and the summer is not very hot. Also, the three-season sunroom usually installed a single-pane glass. On the other ha- hand, the four-season room, which is like actual sunroom, utilize a dual glass that is insulated. In reality, a sunroom is an interior room addition that is designed with a focus on the outdoor. Compared to screen porch and three-season room, actual sunroom are more com- complicated home renovation project that involve HVAC system, insulation, and abundant electric, electricity option. For sunroom to qualify as a gross living space, it must meet two basic criteria. First, it has to be heated and cooled by the same system that services the rest of the house, and if sunroom has a separate method of climate control, such as a space heater or window mounted air conditioning, it most likely will not be included as a home total square footage. So these are the three requirements a sunroom must meet to qualify as a living area, and of course count as a length of the building of the detached house. Our proposed sunroom primary purpose is to make the deck more usable during the spring to fall, rather than serving as a year-round living space for relaxation. The other criteria is how will integrate the sunroom structure in with the rest of the house. Most sunroom extend out from the side of a residence, but our proposed sunroom entered through existing former back door and existing exterior wall separated the addition from the rest of the house. So it is usually good indication that the construction quality of our sunroom is not as high as the structure it was added on, which is, we propose that kind of s- s- structure. Other indication include the floor that is less finished at the flooring elsewhere in the house, and a roof that does not reflect the style of the main roof. As you can see in our drawing, can you please pull up our drawing, page A six? Can I do it by myself, or?
No, we will do it.
Okay, page A six, it's a three-D design of our structure. Is it A six? Oh. But, uh, can you go move a little down, uh, can you go to the A seven, maybe, uh, yeah, A seven and A eight in yours? Can you, uh, scroll it down to A eight? Yeah, if you can see the structure here, it's not the actual roof structure, which is like shingle or very strong roof, and also, it's not a very strong wall that it can protect the whole house and, or add, add it to the whole house. But based on the bylaw, the living space that count in the length of the building is not the space that we can spend time more than living room or kitchen or other space of the house. So our proposed sunroom just follow two criteria of the living space by law. It is just covered and enclosed, not heated. So we believe that it's not count as a square footage and length of the building. That's why we just process the project with the planner recommendation of the refusal.
Danya, excuse me, you have fifteen seconds to wrap up?
Yeah, I'm done, thank you very much.
Oh, you're done, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, panel, any questions for Danya?
Yes.
Mr. Kumerak?
Wha- what is the roof material? I- i- is it going to?
It's acrylic panel.
Acrylic, so it's see-through?
Yes, you can see through.
So, yeah, i- i- like, it's, it's not a solid, uh, material?
No, it's not. No, it's not.
Okay.
You can, you can have a natural light from the top.
Exactly, that, that's what I'm getting at, so, I'm ju- I'm trying to get the visual for what it would look like from the neighbor's house, it won't look like shingled roofing, it'll just look like an enclosed, uh, bubble, really.
Yeah, unfortunately, I could, I didn't send a picture of like, the kind of manufacturer did this job before. Now I have it in my computer, if any chance that I can share it with you, that would be great.
That, that's okay, I, I just wanted to-
See how it looks like?
No, you're not allowed to share.
I, I just wanted to know whether it was a see-through material or whether it was a solid material. And if you're saying it's see-through, that's fine, I, I accept that. And my other question is, have you, uh, spoken to either of your immediate neighbors about this?
Uh, but no, we did not. But I have lots of project in this kind of like, nature structure in many kind of other cities, and I, I honestly, I didn't have any problem with that kind of, uh, like, proposal, 'cause other cities, 'cause this is by law, and other cities never asked me for the length, or I know it's a kind of addition-
I, I, I know exactly where, I know exactly where you're coming from, 'cause we're thinking of doing this too, so, I, I get it. Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, question, there's an existing rear yard deck there right now, is, is that right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, and is this approximately the same square footage as the existing deck?
The covered roof hanging is the whole area of the existing deck, but the proposed sunroom's a little bit smaller to cover, not to cover the deck, but like, a little off from that.
Okay, so, and it's got some walls on it, I, I guess I'm looking at the city comment that negative impact on the neighbors, and I'm looking, there's an existing deck there already with walls on it, so I-
Yes.
I don't see how this is any more negative than what's there now, so.
Exactly.
And, and it's one story.
It just make-
So, so it's, it's really almost an existing situation.
It's very common these days, we do the enclosure deck. And this is just for getting not a, in the windy weather, they can use the actual deck, but the deck is existing. If you can see, we didn't touch even the structure of the deck. So when the people living in that house, they coming out from the door to the deck, they still have a cold weather from the bottom. It just, they wanna close it to have not windy, spend like about fifteen, twenty minutes having their coffee, and more like big space in their house, not actual-
You, you're not replace, are you replacing the deck? With a new?
No, no. And also, we get the approval for the existing structure, we send it to the-
So you're just putting this on top of the existing deck?
On top of that, yes.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, I, I'm just gonna summarize some of what you said. There'll be, it will not be heated, there will be no electrical outlets in here, um, there will be no, there will be no drywall. I- i- it's basically a screened-in porch, but instead of being screened in, it's screened in with plexiglass.
Exactly, exactly. It's not a kind of strong structure.
A Canadian lanai.
Yeah. Anything else? Panel? No? Okay, again, I don't see any registered speakers. Um, maybe to avoid me having to ask if anyone in the room is here about every item. I know why Mr. Millen Pierce is here, or Price is here. Could I ask the lady and gentleman to tell me why they're, what, what item you're here for?
Thirty-six, thirty-nine street, number sixteen.
You don't wanna speak about anything?
No, we're just, we're just here to watch you.
You just wanna see us?
And it's our home that is involved in the applications.
Thank you, okay, so, uh, we are ready to go into committee for a decision then on twenty-four Stanley Avenue.
Um, I, I would like to move approval. I'm just trying to tie this to a condition to basically show that this is not, uh, habitable space in the traditional definition of habitable space. And my only struggle is how to, h- h- how to achieve that. Um, I think I can s- one way would be to tie it to the elevation, showing that it's, it has to be glass. I, I, a little, little bit. Looking for suggestions.
I think, like, like, for me, it's important that it's glass, like, all around, so I, I'd want that to be reflected, to be reflected clearly.
So, um, can we say that, subject to the walls being, um, translucent, is that the? Or does that define a specific thing?
Maybe something like the rear sunroom addition shall be maintained with walls containing glass materials or something to that, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause i- i- in my view, this is less impactful on the neighbors than the existing, uh, high lattice that's there. So, subject to the walls being, um, clear, I don't know.
Sorry, if you look at A seven to A nine, they, they indicate that the sliding multi-track glass doors on, it's like, all-
Right, okay.
Elevations. But if-
It's one of the material, it's clear that the materials, like, the, is tied to it as well.
Yeah, they also state that they're not thermal, so, I mean, it's, sure, tie it to the elevations with, uh, with regards to materials.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, sorry, so the motion would be- Sorry, the motion would be, um, that the application be approved, subject to, um, it being constructed as illustrated in elevations A seven through A nine with regards to the finished materials.
Is there a seconder for Mr. Kumerak's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Riddick, all in favor? Approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your sunroom.
Thank you, I appreciate.
Can we put, just for clarity, in brackets, after finished materials, glass walls? Just so that, if something changes or they need to upgrade it in, down the road?
Yeah, I mean, my, my issue is as long as it's-
Yeah.
See-through.
Yeah.
Because if they choose to do screening instead of glass-
Yeah.
Don't care.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're ready to move on. Agenda item twelve, one oh-five John Street. Purpose is to construct a two-story rear addition and to enclose an existing front porch. We have a revised application with, uh, four variances. And we have, uh, urban forestry requesting condition two. And we have two letters of support, notably from the ne- neighbors on either side of the, uh, property, from one oh-three and one oh-seven. So, um, Kanchin Quinlan is the agent. Kanchin, are you, uh, available to speak to us?
I am.
You said yes?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, good. Um, yeah, could you make a brief presentation on your proposal?
Sure. Um, so, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, my name is Kanchin Quinlan. I am, um, the owner of the home, along with my husband, Peter Quinlan, um, and as well the architectural designer for, um, this, uh, home. And, um, when I had submitted the application- And, um, when I had submitted the application, uh, to the planning department, uh, their major concern was the front yard setback, which was originally proposed at, uh, two point four nine, uh, meters. And, um, I was- I was advised if I could bring back the front yard setback to, um, to meet the neighboring- neighbors' existing front yard setback, which is two point eight three, then they would be happy with that. Um, it is a one and a half story home. We're doing the addition to the front, uh, front porch being enclosed and in addition to the back of the house. Um... And we're doing this because we are a family, a- a young family of four, and we need the space. And, yeah, that's pretty much, um, we've got support from the neighbors. And in terms of, um, the one tree, um, we have submitted the Arborist Report already. And, um, yeah. That's all.
Okay, thanks, Ken Chen. Panel, any comments or questions? For Ken Chen? None? Okay, we have no registered speakers about this item, so we can move into committee for, uh, comments or, uh, a motion. Mr. Kummer?
Um, I'm good with the application. I believe, uh, the revised, uh, version meets the four tests, and I'd be happy to move approval, subject to forestry condition number two.
Second there for Mr. Kummer's motion?
I'll second.
All in favor? That is unanimously approved. Ken Chen? Ken Chen? Enjoy your new enlarged home.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Moving on to item number fourteen. Four twenty-five Kipling Avenue and two fifteen Horner Avenue. This is a consent application. The application is to obtain consent to sever the lot into two lots. Um... And as I say, no- no minor variances. Um, basically severing four twenty-five Kipling Avenue from two fifteen Horner Avenue. And there's a- there's a road dedication involved in this as well. And all existing easements are to be maintained. Uh, we have urban forestry condition three, and we have engineering and construction services conditions. The agent is Matthew Rutledge. Matthew, are you online?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, Matthew. Could you just explain the purpose of this application?
Sure thing. Uh, so, as you've correctly described the consent application, it proposes to sever the property, I mean, the property is municipally known as two fifteen Horner Avenue from four twenty-five Kipling Avenue. And, uh, perhaps if the moderator could just go to the very last page of the presentation materials, which is a Google, Google Maps aerial image. That is... If I've seen correctly, that's actually a draft reference plan by KR C M A R. Uh, but if we wanna just leave it there, that could perhaps be easier. Um, so if you're, just to zoom out a bit.
Sorry, I- I think I've pulled it up now, I'm having a little bit of difficulty with my Adobe. But we've paused-
Okay, this is- this is great, then.
That's good, okay, sounds good.
Perfect, thank you. So, um, as you can see in this aerial image, uh, four twenty-five Kipling is the portion of the property at the west, and it's generally rectangular, or triangular in shape. Whereas two fifteen Horner Avenue is the portion of the property in the northeast, which is also triangular in shape. The northwest rectangle is not part of the subject property of the consent application. So currently, on the property, a waste management company operates at the western portion of four twenty-five Kipling Avenue, whereas a brewery occupies the eastern two fifteen Horner Avenue portion. And both four twenty-five Kipling and two fifteen Horner already function as two separate lots. However, they are connected to each other by a narrow point, um, near the rare corridor to the south. The consent application proposes to sever lands from each other at this point. And this can be more clean, clearly seen in the draft KR C M A R reference plan. If you could just, uh, go up one page, please.
Sorry, we-
That is, uh-
We've paused your time, I'm just having a little bit, again, um, trouble with my Adobe today. So I do apologize. We've paused your time, though, just give me a second and I'll get it, I'll get it pulled up.
No worries, thank you.
Okay, I think this is it, correct?
That is it, thank you. So on the draft reference plan, it identifies both of the proposed lots as well as the proposed road conveyance that will be required as a condition of the severance. So the proposed retained lot, four twenty-five Kipling, is identified in this reference plan as being outlined in blue. Whereas the proposed severed lot being two fifteen Horner Avenue is identified in this reference plan in the green outline. And the proposed, or required road conveyance as a condition of the consent is outlined in red at the west end of the property. Uh, no new easements are proposed as part of the consent application. Um, and just to kind of summarize in total, uh, uh, what the proposed lots are to be described as is, the proposed retained lot, four twenty-five Kipling, is parts one, three, five, six, and twenty-three on this draft reference plan. And the proposed severed lot, two fifteen Horner Avenue, is parts four, and then eight through twenty-two on this draft reference plan. Uh, notably, on July seventh, twenty sixteen, the Committee of Adjustment has actually, uh, approved what was substantially the same application by the previous owners of the subject property for the severance of the two lots. However, for reasons which are unknown, uh, the previous landowners never fulfilled the conditions of approval. For the reasons which are set out in our covering letter dated August second, twenty twenty-three, the consent application conforms with the policies of the City of Toronto Official Plan. In particular, policy two point two point four point three of the Toronto Official Plan, Toronto Official Plan provides that more intensive uses in employment areas is, uh, for business and economic activities will be encouraged to make better use of a limited supply of lands which are available for these activities. Uh, since there are no changes in use proposed for the lots, and the proposed severance of two fifteen Horner Avenue from four twenty-five Kipling Avenue will allow for the proposed lots to be developed separately from each other in a more intensive form, ultimately making better use of these employment lands. The consent application is only to create the one additional lot compared to what currently exists, and therefore, a subdivision of land is not necessary. And the proposed retained and severed lots meet the requirements under section fifty-one twenty-four of the Planning Act. Our client has reviewed the recommended conditions for the severance and is agreeable to them. Thank you for your time and consideration this morning. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions, should there be any.
Thank you, Matthew. Panel, are there any comments or questions of Mr. Rutledge? Okay, there are no registered speakers, so if there are no questions, we can go into committee for a decision. I'll, um, I'll move approval. Yeah, the application for the severances is appropriate and good planning. And that's subject to, um... The specific conditions from, uh, Engineering and Construction Services in their memo dated September sixth, twenty twenty-three. And then any general conditions that apply to severances. And then, um, forestry condition number three. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Is there a second there for Mr. Palmer's motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Kummer, thank you. All in favor? The application has been approved unanimously. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to item fifteen, thirty-three twenty-fifth street. Purpose is to construct a second-story addition over an existing carport. There are eight variances. Uh, we have urban forestry conditions four, which is deferral on their consolidated chart, and then a- a separate memo requesting condition one. And we have transportation services conditions and, uh, planning, community planning condition to construct as illustrated on the site plan as it relates to the south side yard setback. And we have Mr. Addison Millen Pierce here as agent. Good afternoon, Addison.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. My name is Addison Millen Price, planner at Design Plan Services located at nine hundred The East Mall Suites three hundred, here on behalf of the owner.
If you could proceed with the brief presentation, Mr. Millen Pierce?
Absolutely. So, the purpose of this application is to construct a second-story addition over top an existing carport, and that the carport will be removed as part of this application. There are eight variances that are required to, uh, do this. Uh, however, the majority of these variances are reflective of the existing condition in the front yard. Uh, as part of these renovations and additions, a roof will also be constructed over the existing front porch, but there are no variances associated with that roof. Um, we have consulted extensively with planning staff on this application, and after discussing changes to the proposal, we've arrived at the application that's before you now. Planning staff currently has no objections to this application, as written in their report. I'll also confirm that we have no issues with the conditions requested by transportation or planning staff. Both reports recognize the existing nature of variances four through to eight, uh, and therefore, we'll have, uh, no issue constructing as illustrated on the site plan. With respect to the report issued by Urban Forestry that requested deferral, um, I'd like to confirm that there will be no construction, uh, occurring within a tree protection zone. Uh, as shown in, uh, the tree photo, both on the forestry report and supplied by, uh, the applicant, the side addition and new front porch roof will be a significant distance away, uh, well over three point six meters from the city tree, uh, and will therefore not be within a tr- a tree protection zone or pose any potential injury. Uh, despite this, uh, upon reviewing the urban forestry report that was issued last week, I initiated a discussion with staff, uh, to confirm which of the specific variances requested were of concern. And I was confirmed that it was indeed only variances four through to eight that- that were of concern. And more of, these concerns can be addressed by confirming that the existing driveway is to remain as is, and the city tree, uh, fronting this property will be fully protected during construction. Uh, it should be noted that if the driveway were to be removed and replaced with an as-of-right driveway to address variances four to eight, uh, that would actually constitute development within a tree protection zone and- and may end up actually harming a- a tree. Uh, and lastly, while I do not think a deferral is appropriate for this application for the reasons expressed, should the committee choose to approve this application, Urban Forestry will still have an opportunity to review any required materials and provide their clearance, uh, through their requested condition, uh, on their report. Uh, regarding the specific variances being requested, variance one pertains to F S I. Um, zero point three five is permitted, whereas the proposal is zero point five three. But I wanna point out that this increase in F S I is entirely a result of that second-story addition. Uh, the addition is limited to thirty-seven square meters in size, about four hundred square feet. Uh, and the existing dwelling is already above zero point three five F S I. In fact, it sits right now at zero point four six F S I. So this increase to zero point five three is significantly more minor when you consider that. Uh, in terms of G F A, that's a difference from two point, uh, sorry, two five five square meters to two nine three square meters. And is also quite similar to the adjacent dwelling that is located at, uh, thirty-one twenty-fifth street, which was approved with an F S I of zero point five one. Uh, variance two pertains to the side yard setback of the south side lot line. Uh, I'll- I'll note that the existing building is not parallel to the lot line, and the side yard setback is therefore only zero point four five for the front portion of the addition. Uh, the setback gradually increases to zero point five two at the rear of the house. Uh, in addition, and a- a key part of this proposed renovation is that it is exclusively a second-floor addition. This means that the proposed side yard setback variance will not impact the ability to travel from the front to the rear of the property. And this is a significant improvement over the existing condition as that existing carport on the ground floor does not currently permit this. The existing carport is also currently much closer to the lot line than the proposed, uh, addition at approximately zero point, uh, two, eight meters. Uh, and as noted in the planning staff report, the proposed side yard setback mirrors that of the adjacent dwelling. With respect to, uh, variance three that pertains to the roof eaves, uh, the proposed eaves will be located zero point two meters from the lot line and will project one meter into the required setback. And as the side yard setback, this represents a significant improvement from the previous eaves that were located on the existing carport and allows the opportunity for the property owner to provide newly constructed eaves to better manage the flow of property. Lastly, I'll again note that variances four through eight all pertain to existing conditions on the lots and therefore do not pertain to the proposed addition. As such, maintaining these conditions and approving the proposed addition will have little to no impact on the neighborhood or adjacent dwellings.
Thank you, Addison. Panel, any questions or comments for Addison?
Just trying to understand, you- you had mentioned that it, carport will be eliminated, but will it not continue to function as a carport?
Uh, to- to clarify, so it will continue to function as a carport in the sense that there will be a, uh, massing above a- an area where a car is parked, but there will no longer be a wall on the ground floor that is directly adjacent. Instead, it'll be, uh, above.
Right, and the- and the driveway access is being maintained to that parking spot? So that continues to be a legal parking spot?
That is correct.
Anyone ready for a motion?
I'm good to go. Um, I find the application to- to meet the four tests. Uh, would like to therefore move approval, subject to, uh, forestry condition one with regards to the city tree in the front, and subject to, uh, the two transportation conditions.
And did you include the planning condition?
Sorry, yes, um... As illustrated on the site plan as it relates to the south side setback, sorry.
No problem.
Please.
Is there a second there for Mr. Kummer's motion?
I'll second that.
Ms. Ruddock, all in favor? That's unanimous approval. Thank you, Addison. And we are now at the sixteenth and final item on the agenda. 3639th Street. Purpose is to construct a new two-story rear addition, a new two-story front addition above the existing dwelling, a rear deck, and a front porch. There are eight variances. We have on file a request for urban forestry condition two. We have the previous minutes of August 31st of this year where this application was deferred. And we have one email expressing opposition, and we have a support petition, and four additional emails offering support to this application. The agent for this application is Max Humanik. We'll ask you to speak to us in a second. And we also have two registered speakers, one immediately next door, and one two doors removed.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, the two other registered speakers that you have on your list were mistakenly put in. I found out later on that they were just going to be observing, so they will not actually be speaking. So we only have the agent Max Humanyuk available on WebEx.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Okay, Max, are you with us and ready to speak to us?
Yes, before I speak, can I just point out that it's not eight variances, but six?
I have eight before me.
Oh, wow, okay. Nope, that's the wrong zoning notice. If you can see on the application center that there are six variances, in fact.
We all have eight before us. You're referring to something that is not before us.
No, this was received by the Committee of Adjustment on.
I'm hearing there were ten, and it's now been updated to be eight.
Sorry, that is incorrect. As you, this was received by the Committee of Adjustment on September 7th, and there are six variances. This is the zoning notice that I am looking at from the application center, and it is on file.
Did you bring this to the attention of our office when you got the notice in the mail? Because this is rather late for us to be trying to figure this out. I'm asking the agent, did you bring this to the attention of our office when you received the notice?
This was uploaded to the application center, so I'm not sure why. I can, I can proceed with the, with these for now, if that's, we don't want to delay the application.
Okay, in doing so, please make it absolutely clear which of these eight variances you wish to proceed with and which you do not, and which you want to revise. And we'll deal with.
Can I see the zoning notice before you again, Adam?
My colleague Adam will be sharing that content momentarily.
This notice we're looking at was mailed on or before Monday, October 2nd.
Could you scroll down a little bit? Sorry.
Yeah, let's see what he wants.
Okay.
Okay, so Max, you see the eight variances before us? Could you start, just because I'll be thinking about it until you tell me.
Okay.
Which, if any, of these variances do you want to remove? And which, if any, of these variances do you want to change?
Sorry, it looks like five and six are both repeated. So that is why you are looking at, well, eight. The other one, yeah. So those two are repeated, so that.
They're not repeated. They're not repeated. They are different.
Okay.
Five has to do with front yard eaves encroaching. Six has to do with side yard eaves encroaching. So it's encroachments on two different yards. They're not repeating.
Okay, got it. Yeah, this is fine. I will proceed with my presentation.
So are you proceeding with an application for eight variances as we have before us? And if not, please explain.
Yes, I'll proceed with these.
You will accept a decision on the eight variances before us. Correct?
Yes, correct.
Are you sure you don't need more time to determine that for sure, or are you certain? Because if you're not certain, we can always defer this until you are.
I would like not to defer this. But yeah, we can, let's proceed.
Mr. Chair, can we just confirm that the, and the members in attendance, do they have the notice with the eight? Can we clarify that?
Could you, could you speak into the microphone? Thank you.
And just for the record, state your name.
Yes. My name is Oksana Ladwig, 3639th Street. This is our home that we are talking about refinishing. I do have the six variances right here in my hand. I don't understand why it didn't get through, but for that purpose, we are here today, just in case.
Because they're reading off the zoning notice, Mr. Chair. They're not reading off the actual public hearing notice, so the, the.
Okay, Paul, you can give that back. We have that on file.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And ma'am, you don't, you don't wish to speak when the opportunity comes up later, or sir? No. No, they can't. Well, I don't know how they relate.
We were just advised since we have a representative that we are not allowed to speak, but if the opportunity.
Well, because you're not pre-registered.
No, we could have registered this morning when we came in.
You're the owners. Okay, so you have, you have a vested interest in our proceedings.
Very invested.
Okay.
Thank you.
So as of right now, until I'm told otherwise, we're proceeding to hear and make a decision on an application for the eight variances before us as showing on the screen.
Okay.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Could you, sir, make a brief presentation to us, explain, explaining the proposal?
Yeah, so good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Max Humanyuk of 38 Joe Schuster Way, and I'm here today on behalf of the owners of 3639th Street. We are proposing a two-story addition in the rear yard, a deck, a walkout basement, and a front porch. We are seeking these minor variances, which I believe are, meet the intent of the official plan and are minor in nature. We have also received a number of letters of support and a petition of support from multiple neighbors. We work together with the planning, city planning staff in order to mitigate the number of variances and reduce them to an acceptable amount. One of the first minor variances we are seeking is a setback for the deck. The design of the deck tried to follow the line of the exterior walls on the south elevation and north as much as possible. Initially, we had the deck much closer to the north side, but after speaking with the neighbors, we increased that setback to 0.71 meters. Notably, we previously had a variance for building length, which we addressed and omitted in the new design, and which reduced the FSI from 0.7 to 0.67. This increase of the FSI is only due to the second-story addition and the utilization of space on top of the existing house footprint. Additionally, there are many approved houses in the area with greater FSIs, such as 4038th Street with an approved FSI of 0.86, 5238th Street with an approved FSI of 0.68, and 2739th Street with an approved FSI of 0.68. Another, the second minor variance is the floor level of the main pedestrian entrance. We are looking for a 0.3 meter increase. The main reason is because underpinning was not a viable or economic option. At the moment, the basement is not functional with its low headroom, so we needed to raise the floor level. There are many examples in the neighborhood with varying pedestrian entrances, which exceeded the required 1.2 meter height. Some of these examples include 20 Garden PL, 7A, 39th Street, and on the corner of Garden PL and 41st Street. A lot of these houses also, they take up more than 50% of their front landscaping with their driveways exceeding their landscape requirements. With respect to the roof variance, roofie variance, the second-story addition follows the existing north side setback, and it's built right on top of the existing house footprint with the exception of the addition in the, in the rear, which does not get closer to the north side property line, but maintains the existing setback. We've also submitted an arborist report on how we plan to protect the trees on the properties, and will seek to get that permit from Urban Forestry. And just lastly, a little bit about the owners. They are a young family looking to establish some roots, who love the neighborhood and need some additional space in order to accommodate their growing family. They wish to propose an addition that will enhance the look of the neighborhood and provide a home for the long term. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Max. Panel, any questions or comments for, for Max? No? Okay, we have no registered speakers, so we can move into committee for discussion and decision.
It's your last meeting.
I think Neil's stalling for another hour.
Okay, no, I, I, I just, I had a question, but it's okay. It doesn't, doesn't really matter that much.
Secondor for Mr. Palmer? All in favor? Unanimously approved. Hope it was worth the wait. I hope it was worth the wait.
Yeah, definitely was. Thank you.
So I'll now invite a motion to adjourn. All in favor? That too is unanimous. We are adjourned at 12:32 PM.
Thank you, members, on your last day of.
And thanks, staff.
This panel.